Council meeting will now come to order. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson is absent today. Councilwoman Anatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for the blessings you've provided. We just thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy most of all. We pray and ask for your wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment to be bestowed on us, Father, as we go through the business at hand. I pray, Lord, that we seek your will, never resist you at any time, please you with all that we say, do, and think. We give you all the praise for all you have done and promise to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on January 3rd.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of December 30th through January the 5th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven on the agenda is when we have proclamations and commendations. Mayor, do you have any today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The first mayor's commendation is the Gadsden Fire Department, which has distributed thousands of Christmas gifts to children in our community over the past 10 years through its annual Toys for Santa program. This program would not be possible without the hard work and dedication of Misty Lemons and Kerry Pentecost, who have combined 30 years of experience with the fire department. In 2022, the Gadsden Fire Department received over $35,000 in donation, providing Christmas gifts for over 300 children. Toy donations were also made by the program to the recipients at the Salvation Army and Greater Gadsden Housing Authority. The toys from the Santa program focuses on empowering the family unit and affecting without the need to be seen. On behalf of the City of Gadsden, I'd like to recognize Misty and Kerry, the Toys for Santa program's success is a direct result of your hard work and dedication to our community. Thank you for your tireless efforts in helping numerous families across the City of Gadsden celebrate the Christmas season.
Coach Jason's down here.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, and thank you, ladies, for what you do for families in Gadsden and Etowah County. Later on in the council meeting and department reports, Chief Reed is going to give a direct report on those efforts. So, thank you very much. Item eight is unfinished business. Eight A is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located on Crotcher and Alley. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Omar Cunningham has offered to pay $300 for the property. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item eight B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 709 Hook Lake Road in District Two. This resolution was tabled 30 days on December 6th. There is a recommendation, a recommendation from the building official to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I did go out and actually take a look at this property. I'm not sure what all needs to be done, but it does appear that some work is going on at this particular property, so I would like to extend them a little bit more time.
All right. Does that come in, I guess, in a motion of a certain amount of days or typically 30s?
Yes, if we could do another 30 days, I just know work is going on there. If we could do that.
Okay. That's the motion, I guess, would require a second.
A second.
All right, second.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for an additional 30 days.
Item eight C, no action will be needed. That has been, that item has been abated. All right. Item number nine is, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 141 Brookwood Drive in District One, Joseph A. Woods, subject to a mortgage in favor of Your Choice Properties LLC, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in November of 2021. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the favor of the council? Pleasure of the council, rather.
I'm making a motion.
To abate the property? Okay.
Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is our next public hearing, a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1212 Johnson Street in District Two, Tuscaloosa LLC, subject to a mortgage in favor of First Bank of Alabama, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Next item is a public hearing, a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2919 and a half Shayhan Avenue in District Six. Stephen Workman and Janice Workman, also known as Janice Sue Potter, subject to a mortgage in favor of City of Gadsden, and Christopher Earl Baker, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, based on recent improvements, we're going to ask this case to be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
All right.
I agree with the, make that motion.
Okay.
Table for 30?
A second.
A second, all right. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at 1807 Mount Zion Avenue in District Five, State of Alabama, rights of redemption of Joel T. Smith and/or his heirs, if deceased, subject to a mortgage in favor of South Trust Bank of Etowah County, being the last known owners. This is for demolition work that has already been performed, and the amount is $3,190. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to abate. Is that correct?
Yes.
To adopt.
To adopt the resolution. Yes, thank you. Needing a second. Anybody want?
Second.
Second, okay.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Just to be clear, this is, as the resolution stated, this is $3,190. The work has already been done. The City of Gadsden, the taxpayers have gone out through the process that is observed through state law. We have torn the house down, hauled it off, put it in the landfill. The total cost is $3,190. So, we're, and this is an attempt to, you know, to file a lien against that property so we can hopefully regain that money. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution, amending resolution appointing a member to the Commercial Development This is the one where we're changing the name. This is, at a last minute, we didn't realize that we had a, had a challenge here. The name that is on the current is Jesse Battles, and it needs to be Melissa Battles. And Iva, you'll have to help me with this to make sure, so we need to...
You would entertain a motion to substitute the resolution, and we would vote on that, and then you would vote for adoption of the substituted resolution.
All right. So, we will call for a motion to create, to substitute Melissa Battles for Jesse Battles on this resolution.
Then you need a motion to adopt.
Yeah, motion to adopt that.
Well, we need the motion to substitute first.
Yeah, got to substitute it first, so...
So, do we have a motion to substitute the resolution?
I'm making a motion to substitute the resolution.
A second.
Okay.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute the resolution with the new name, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the substitution.
Now, we would call for...
Adoption.
A motion to adopt.
Right.
I'm making a motion to adopt.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, we...
We're even there today, aren't we?
We are. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt the resolution as substituted.
You know, for full transparency, you're, this is what happens when you have five new council members that have never done this before, and when you have a council member that's only done it one time but has never been the president of the council before. So, you know, nobody's asleep at the wheel. We're wide awake. You know, I've kind of coined a new phrase. I might be old, but I'm slow. So, y'all bear with us, had to do this. Luckily for the City of Gadsden and the taxpayers, Iva Nelson's done this for, Iva, forgive me.
A few years.
A few years. Somewhere around 39 or something like that. So, trust me, we're in great hands up here. Iva will make sure that we do everything legally and by the book, and so thank you very much for your help. All right. Item 14 is a resolution appointing member to the Gadsden Land Bank Authority. This appoints John Reed to complete the term of Jesse Battles for a term expiring on June 14th, 2024. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'm moving to adopt.
A second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 on the agenda is a resolution amending rental rates for Nakalula Falls Campground. This amends rental rates established by resolution numbers R-485-16 as amended. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
A second.
Is there any discussion?
This is just, yes, Mr. President, this is just basically, we're raising the rents of the campground rates correct, just so we can, we're already below, my apologies, we're already below rental rates in the City of Gadsden, so we're actually the lowest campground right now, way below. So, we're actually just getting right up to par with everybody else, and also this is going to help us out to actually remodel the campground in the future.
Thank you for that. Any others? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 16 is a resolution authorizing change order number one for bid number 3460 for 2021, the Community Development Street Resurfacing Project. This is to reconcile pay item additions and deletions ordered through construction. The amount is $86,495.38, increasing the contract with Vulcan Materials Asphalt and Construction LLC to $1,432,568.38. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 17 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Orchestra Partners Development LLC. This is to create and implement a strategic urban redevelopment plan for the Gadsden Riverfront, and the amount is $70,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 18 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Goodwin Mills Kaywood LLC. This is to provide an updated comprehensive plan for the city, and the amount is $267,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 19 is the first reading, is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget. This is related to agenda items that we just read and voted on and approved. Item numbers 17 and 18, it transfers $337,000 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance into the Planning Department Contractual Services account to fund the agreements. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. I think this might be an appropriate time for full transparency. We discussed this last week. This is an exciting time for Gadsden. The mayor and his team have engaged and looked at numerous firms. They selected Orchestra Partners and Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. Orchestra Partners is going to present us with a plan that's going to be riverfront development that we've all talked about for decades. It's going to stretch from the property behind Arby's all the way north, I guess it would be, to the McCartney Construction property. And then Goodwin Mills and Kaywood is going to provide a complete comprehensive plan for basically a master plan for the City of Gadsden that's going to replace the 1974 plan that is in place right now. I'll remind everybody it's 2023, and so this is timely, and it's a very exciting time. I've said now for about a month or so, if you can't get excited about being in Gadsden right now, you need to check yourself. There are some exciting things coming. These guys have done this all over the southeast. This isn't their first time to do these type of plans. They're very well credentialed, truly professionals in what they do, and this is going to really change the face of Gadsden. I predict four years from now, we're not going to recognize Gadsden. It's going to be a total different place, and I appreciate Mayor Ford, your leadership and the vision that you and your team are bringing, and excited to have you guys with us today. Thank you for coming back to Gadsden. You're always welcome, of course. I'm sure we're going to see a lot of you in the, in the coming weeks and months, so thank you very much.
Mr. President, can I say something?
Yes, please do.
They'll be meeting with each council member also regarding their district and some hot spots in those areas, and I want to thank the city employees for Engineering Department, some of Nick and Kerry, everybody putting in our staff, coming together, and this has been going on quite a while. So, thank you to the council and to the staff. I think we're going to see great results from this.
That's a good point. There will be public meetings and public input time during this process, so this, it's going to be an exciting time to let the citizens of Gadsden express their desires and what they'd like to see for their city. So, we're very excited to have you guys with us and look forward to the success of what you're going to bring. Thank you very much. All right, so that's, now I've talked so much, I forgot, did we vote on ordinance?
Well, it was for the first reading.
For the first reading, right.
Unless someone chooses to do otherwise.
Yeah, that's, all right, we'll move to item 20. It's the ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at the Gadsden Air Depot. Dairyman Supply Company has offered $550,000 for building T-3 at the Air Depot. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. That brings us to item 21, which is new business. I believe we may have one item.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we make an amendment to the fiscal year 2023 budget. For the mayor, looking at his budget, obviously, the needs for this mayor is going to be a little different than the previous administration, and so we don't want his hands to be tied as it relates to that.
All right. So, there's been a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget. That's, it's to transfer $337,000 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance into account number 001-3000-465.20, which is the Planning Department Contractual Services. Funds will be used to pay for the vision planning and, well, I'm reading the wrong one, aren't I? I'm sorry. I apologize. Again, let me find this. One, it needs one more piece of paper up here. Here we go. This would be, that the general fund budget adopted by ordinance, let me start over number 0-35-22, the fiscal year 2023 budget, is further amended by transferring $242,500 from the general fund unassigned balance into the following accounts, which are listed here, probably too numerous to be listed, but as, so for transparency's sake, there wasn't hardly, there was virtually no money in the mayor's administration budget for 2023. And so, in order to go about the business of the city that the mayor and his team have cast out in their vision, it requires money for travel, advertisement, just numerous various things, and so that is what we're going to do today. Basically, the administration's out of money, has no money, have no money to operate, and I can attest that some of the furniture or all the furniture in their offices have been paid for by their personal funds, so it's just time that the money was...
So, there is furniture and a TV in my office that I pay for with my personal funds, which is because I've been asked that three times, so, and I bought it on Black Friday.
So, you got a deal, right? Okay. So, just with all the exciting things going on, there's, there has to be money to pay for those things. There's a trip to Washington, DC. There's already appointments made with government officials there, all about bringing industry and commerce to Gadsden, Alabama, so we're excited.
We have six trips planned in the next two months.
All for industrial recruitment.
All for bringing back funds to Gadsden, yes, sir.
Right. Well, thank you for doing that. So, there's been a motion to have that, if there's any more discussion?
A second.
In a second. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Okay. We have a motion in second to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of the ordinance under new business today. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for immediate consideration.
So, now we need another...
Now, we need a motion in second for adoption.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to adopt.
A second.
All right. Clerk, will you take that vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for adoption.
I don't think there's any more new business today. That brings us to department reports, committees, boards. Chief Reed, I believe you have a report on Toys from Santa that we had already made an award for, or recognition, rather, for this morning.
Mayor, council, I have two brief reports today. The first is the Toys from Santa program. This year, we've helped more children than we've ever been able to help, and they are all within the city limits of Gadsden. We're still waiting on one agency to report back exactly how many children they helped through our assistance, but we've helped over 375 children in this city. We raised $32,818, and we spent $35,571. So, it's a slight deficit, however, we do have a little bit of funding left in the bank from last year, so we should be okay. But this is the largest, not only in helping children, but in fundraising efforts by the fire department. So, thank you for recognizing the fire department, especially Misty and Kerry, because they do the lion's share of the work. The other report you have before you is the call volume, our total incidents for the year. This does not tell the total tale of the fire department. This is strictly runs. This is not counting any fire prevention activities, any inspections, hydrants, host testing, anything like that. This is strictly calls that we make. As you see, fighting fires is the smallest thing we do, 298 fires in the last calendar year. 5,514 of our calls were EMS calls, where you see service at 1,603. Quite honestly, some of those could have been classified as EMS calls. So, that is the largest thing we do, is emergency medical services, but we have to be prepared for the fires because you never know where they're going to break out or at what time. So, thank y'all for allowing us to have the ability to do that service and the function for the city. Does anyone have any questions about that report?
Just for, so, I mean, so I'll understand and make sure maybe others have the same question. You know, obviously, so, my goodness, two-thirds of the calls are rescue and emergency medical services.
And that's everything from cardiac arrest to vehicle accidents. That could be anything in there.
Okay. That was, I think you were here for the end of the pre-council meeting, and there was some talk about addiction recovery and things like that.
I came in on the tail end of it, yes, sir.
And so, there was a question about Narcan and stuff. Does that come under those calls?
Yes, sir. If we administer Narcan, it's in those 5,514, but by no means is that the larger portion. That is a smaller portion of our calls.
Right, right, okay. False alarm and false call, 658 over the 12-month period is...
That can be anything from a business having an alarm go off and it be nothing when we get there, to someone driving down the street and saying, I see someone unconscious, and we get a fire truck there, and the person be taking a nap.
Mr. President, can I ask something on that?
Yes, sir.
So, is there a fee for a false alarm to a business? Is there like a $20 fee or something?
Oh, Jason, are you still in here? There is no, is there a fee at this time?
No.
Don't some cities have a...
Yes, sir.
A call fee?
They do.
What is a standard fee?
I really couldn't tell you. It varies city to city, some as high as $100 and some less than that.
It ranges in more $50 for five or six calls.
So, just information, possibly, council and president, that insurance, your business insurance pays for a fee for a fire department to come out for a call.
Yes, sir.
So, we may be leaving some money on the table there.
That's a good point.
Isn't it a, I think I have one, isn't it, like just a little sticker we buy from City of Gadsden, but it's real, it's like $15 for three years or so.
So, he's talking about the sticker fee, which is a fee, and then also say if you called at Blackstone 911 for a fire, and there was a fire, your insurance would pay like $100 with no deductible included to the fire department for them coming out.
And is it, I mean, if a fire alarm goes off, you guys, if it's false alarm or not, you guys, I've been told you guys got to come out regardless, right?
Yes, sir. Even if dispatch tells us this is a false alarm, we send one truck, because it has happened out in the City of Gadsden where someone says, hey, it's a false alarm, you can cancel, and it'd actually be a fire.
Yeah, I didn't, I was cooking spaghetti one time at the house, you know, and burnt some toast, and, you know, it went off, and I said, cancel it, and then I looked, you know, somebody knocks on the door, and I got 12 fire trucks.
Yeah, we're always going to send someone.
And I'm like, "Well, I didn't mean for all this to happen." And they're like, "Well, we have to come regardless." So, and that's just... When a fire alarm goes off, because you don't know if somebody could be burning the house down and say, "Don't come."
Absolutely. Anyone can say anything. The fire marshal can address this further if y'all'd like to allow him to speak.
Yeah, so, Mr. President, we'll look, our mayor's office will look into the other cities about their fees and see if they charge.
Yeah, that'd be good. That's a...
What we currently have now in the city of Gadsden is through the police department, they're required to get a permit for an alarm. That includes burglar and fire. And then there's an ordinance that attaches to that. If we have so many false alarms in a certain amount of time, then they start getting fined. That's the only thing that we have currently right now. We don't have any pay structure for...
That's usually not... We never enforce that, correct?
Very seldom is it enforced. It's like three false alarms in a six-month period, I think. I can't remember it exact, but I think it's three times. And it's through the police department, the way that that runs. Currently, we have nothing on the fire side, so.
Sometimes you can't. Sometimes you have a rusher truck coming in at 4:30 in the morning. I don't even hear it. People call me, and I'll get up, you know, and I'll say, "Oh, well, my alarm went off." So, I know the police did go out. But, I mean, sometimes it's, you can't help it. And other times, you should be able to like call it off.
So, the insurance relates more to fires, like if there is a fire and you come out.
Yes, most of them have a rider for fire service. We have never charged for that in the history of the fire department that I'm aware of. But most of them do have a rider saying they will pay for fire service for response. And please don't think that all 658 of these are responses to businesses. The larger number of these are where we're called out to medical emergencies, and it be nothing when we get there. So...
Chief, another question out of the 8,735 calls, is that up or down from previous years?
That is up, just over 200 calls. And when we saw it went up, we went to look at things to see why it went up. We'd look to see if that was because of our automaticated agreements with the surrounding cities. It's not with... That added 11 calls to our total top call volume for last year. So, that's nothing for me, really. Most of it was EMS calls.
Okay. And you may not have this information, but I'm curious, cities similar to our size, how does our call volume compare?
We have been looking. I've actually shared some of that information lately. Anniston is the closest analog I have to that right now, and we're a couple thousand more a year than they are. But our structure of the fire department service is also slightly different from theirs, so.
Okay, that's interesting. And you mentioned the shared services, I think, with the other, with cities like Atala. I noticed last night, Mayor Ford was at a fire on Wall Street.
Yes, sir.
So, thankful for you guys that nobody was hurt. Obviously, it looked like a pretty big fire, but I noticed that the city of Atala was called, and they assisted. So, that looks like that's working very well.
It is working, and we do appreciate their assistance. They came, we called them, the assistant chief on duty called for their assistance, because we had over half of the city on that fire. So, Atala came to assist us so that we could still have a couple of fire trucks in service should there be another emergency.
Well, thank you for leading. I think that was a great program that you guys have, the other chiefs have gotten together to create that common...
It seems to be working well between all the departments.
Yeah, because I know we've helped recently in recent months. I think we were maybe Glencoe, or either they helped us. I can't remember.
With us in Glencoe, it's went both ways recently. Us in Rainbow City do respond together. And I think it's been a total of three fires, counting this one last night, that us and Atala have helped one way or the another. The cities helping each other.
Sure, it's nice to know that you have that help when you need it.
It is.
That you can call, and then those guys come running. So, thank you, and thank you to those cities.
Thanks, sir.
Well, thanks. All right, any other department reports or committees or boards? All right, if not, we'll have remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor Ford, would you like to lead us off?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the council, and thanks for adopting the whatever it was today, the amendment or ordinance or amendment to the budget. But I want to tell you a little bit about what's been going on with us. We visited with something that might interest you with an engineering firm, possibly, to work with the Gadsden Airport Authority. Two new airport members went into effect this week. We also requested to the FAA out of Jackson, Mississippi, for them to come and visit with us to let us know some of the guidelines about the fence and the property outside the fence. So, this is an exciting time for the airport authorities. It's been a long time since the FAA has come up here to visit with us, and that will take place Friday. Tomorrow, we're also taking the mayor's staff. This is something that I was hoping that we could do sooner, but we're taking it tomorrow. We're visiting Coleman with their mayor and their staff, and looking at their parks and rec department and some of the programs that they have. And then we're going on over to Huntsville. And the mayor, Tommy Battles, who's a friend of mine, is meeting with us, and he's going to show us their city hall, and also their rec facility and some of their department heads, trying to just kind of see what the other cities do that are pretty successful and what they do. We're filming recruitment videos for policemen and firemen. Currently, I'm not sure the chief could tell us. I think we're almost at full force in the fire department now, thanks to him for going to speak to graduation and recruiting five firemen. So, we're almost at 100% staff. Police, we're still behind 20-some-odd police officers, but we're hopefully getting there. We're kicking off several infrastructure projects, and we're seeking multiple grants. President Back brought it to our attention that Darden Rehab and Alabama Department of Rehabilitation Services, ADRS, were being moved from Gadsden State Community College. I contacted the commissioner in Montgomery with ADRS. She came up here with her staff, which is, she said, was one of the first times she's ever been asked to come. So, it was a great meeting. We're actually working with IDA and locating a building, working with Dr. Kathy Murphy and keeping them there until a building can be built. So, things are moving in a great positive direction for our special needs community of having maybe a special needs complex built just for those people. And it's going to be exciting. We're going to DC in February, and then we're going back in March with the council. We're also going to Montgomery twice. We're going to present our ASKS, A-S-K-S, to all parties involved, and we're going to sell our city and define our narrative. We're also working with, last night, Rainbow City voted for the mayor to enter into participation with our IDA, with Etowah County's IDA. So, that's an exciting time. I've also visited with Mayor Larry Means in Atala, also visited with Mayor Scott Reeves in Huxbluff. We're trying to bring all cities into one IDA to have one industrial development authority. They will also participate with their monies. So, it's a good opportunity, because he was already representing Etowah County anyway. So, the last thing I want to address is something that's been a little bit controversial. I want to just bring it to everybody's attention. There's something that called Huckabee Animals. We had to condemn this property. The property was in horrible condition. We were presented with the fact there was no liability insurance. This place was not suited for animals. It was standing in filth. We had been working with the individual that runs Huckabee Animals to relocate their animals. The problem was, we determined that some of the animals were being brought from outside of our city. So, what was a good intention with the previous council turned into a situation we had to address. I want to thank y'all for your support. I want to thank Brian Harbison. I want to thank Chief Crane for some of the stuff that y'all have done, and Tina King and Gina Hollingsworth with our task force committee that y'all helped us develop. They're doing a great job. So, I wanted to address that. A lot of bad talk, been talking on social media, and we're going to define our narrative, and that's the truth, and that's what's been happening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Appreciate that report. Councilwoman Latha?
Thank you. I want to start by saying good morning to everyone. And I just want to say very quickly, we attended our first mayor's ball on Saturday. It had some hiccups, but overall, it was a good event, good to be out and see everyone having a good time. So, we look forward to that in the previous years. Let me just say, Mr. Mayor, you're welcome. Keep doing a great job with the money. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Yes, just also want to just tell everybody, thank you for everything that you do. A lot of times when you're not up close and personal, you don't see everything that everybody does. So, certainly, we thank our mayor, Mayor Ford. Thank you for all that you're doing. Thank you for all the first responders. I want to say quickly, the last few years, we've hosted Toys for Tots at our church, serving about 1,500 kids. Well, this year, the Marine Corps decided to take it over, and they didn't do it this year. And I wondered where all those kids were going to go and what would be done. So, Chief Reed, thank you for that report, because I had no idea that we serviced that many kids. So, we appreciate all that y'all do. Thank you.
Councilwoman Avery?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to everyone for my birthday wishes. It's... I usually don't celebrate for myself. I celebrate for those, in memory of those that did not make it. And in lieu of that, we lost another person in our community, an unfortunate event. Thank the fire department, EMS, police department. Chief came out. And these are some issues that we have to address. So, on January the 17th, we're having our district meeting at the Civic Center. And we will begin, our meeting officially begins at 6:30, but we'll be there at 6:00 PM. We'll have vendors there with some things that addresses, will be addressed towards the community as need purposes. So, again, that's District Three, district meeting Tuesday, the 17th at 6:00 PM. And the meeting will start promptly at 6:30, okay? Second thing, I will go into thanking a small business in the community, Adams and Bugs Funeral Home for their Night of Compassion on this past Sunday, and giving an opportunity for those families to come and just allowing that local business to appreciate for their service and one, and then that those families in return, just thanking them for a wonderful remembrance of their loved ones. Sunday, January the 15th, Carver Community Rehabilitation Committee will be hosting, along with the family of Ms. Frances Jelena Harris, the renaming dedication of Carver Square. And that will be in honor of Ms. Frances Jelena Harris. And so, that will be this coming Sunday, January the 15th, which is also a birthday celebration of Ms. Harris. And that will be at 10:30, Tuscaloosa Avenue at the Carver Legacy Museum. That's January the 15th at 3:00 PM. I want to say that's all I have. Again, want to also give condolences to the Spears, Mila Spears and his family, the loss of his mother, the matriarch of their family. Our hearts and prayers and thoughts are with you all continuously. And hopefully, I'll be able to get something to the mayor's office, and we can maybe present that family. She's a lady to remember in our community for her hard work, volunteer, and her efforts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Avery. Councilwoman Minatra?
Well, I think we've all celebrated football, but I wanted to just bring to light that wonderful story of number three, Damar Harris for the Buffalo Bills. And what happened actually a week ago, Monday Night Football, when he collapsed on the field with a cardiac arrest. And the entire country came together, not just to pray for him and the fact that he's back in Buffalo getting care, and he's not in the critical care condition anymore. But the fact that his charity, his foundation, that supports children and toys, hit raised over $8 million in one week because of what happened to him. And what it brings to light for me, and what I would like to do for my district, is to host some CPR training, because things like that happen. And he got the care that he needed when he needed it, and that's why he's alive today. So, I just want to share that that's my focus for my first district meeting is CPR training. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, it's probably already been talked about, but I do want to mention, I'm a member of the Friends of the Falls Association of Nakle La Mountain. We do some work with the trails and anything outside the falls and in the park. But I want to say Christmas at the Falls is over with now. And there was a great group of staff up there, Christina Richardson, Jen Wellington, Janet Terrence, and their staff did a great job. They're up there in the cold rain sometimes, and came out with some great numbers. They went in what they wanted, but they had a lot of rain days. But I just wanted to, you know, reach out to them, tell them we appreciate that. And we are feeding them, the Friends of the Falls group is feeding them tomorrow for a little lunch at the Kiwanis, just to tell them we appreciate it. Anybody from the... I know y'all are going tomorrow, but maybe we can get with them and tell them how much we appreciate it one day. Appreciate it. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank y'all for doing that. The Friends of the Falls is an outstanding group. I know you've been a part of that for many years, but they, I think I've said before, without the Friends of the Falls, volunteer group, I don't think Nakle La Falls would look anything near what it looks like.
They did a lot of work behind the scenes.
Really do. I saw them cutting down trees a couple of weeks ago that had fallen over some trails and some volunteers doing that. So, thank you to that group. Thank you for y'all for doing that lunch. I just want to bring up a few things. One is an effort of what we just approved for the money for the administration office, the mayor's office. It just kind of shows, goes to show, they're going to Huntsville, they're going to Coleman, and they're going to learn. They're going to see what other cities are doing with certain departments. I congratulate you guys for doing that, to see, you know, there's good practices out there. So, as opposed to try to reinvent the wheel, go see what other people are doing that's successful, which is what y'all are doing. And I think that's going to bring fruit back to Gadsden. So, now you've got the money to go travel and you don't have to hitchhike to
I'm driving the van.
Coleman. Oh, you're driving the van. Good luck. That'll be good. And to your comment, Mayor Ford, about the Darden Rehabilitation Center and the Alabama Department of Rehabilitation, both those entities have been in Gadsden for, oh, gosh, decades, no telling how long. They provide a very valuable service, but they also have about 64 employees total that we need to retain in the city of Gadsden. And they would only be moving a few blocks from their current locations, and I think that's good for their clients. And it kind of gets them into the heart of the town. It goes in, it flows with redevelopment of East Gadsden or the continued development of East Gadsden. So, I'm excited about that possibility and the things to come there. Y'all have witnessed a little bit of the sausage, of how the sausage is made today with some of these ordinances and some of the changes. Help is on the way. This Thursday, the Alabama League of Municipalities has agreed to come to Gadsden and do a, what I call, Government 101. If you think about it, this past election cycle, there's eight years of, I guess, local city government knowledge on, at the city right now. It's Jason Wilson, who has four years, and I have four years. And so, normally, there's not that much turnover in a city government. The Alabama League normally does training like this where you all go to Montgomery. And since our election cycle is one of about six or eight cities in the state that is what's called like off-cycle, our elections are in 2022, then 2026. Most cities are in 2020 and then 2024. So, we kind of fall in the middle. They've agreed to come to us. So, they're going to come here Thursday and take all of us through, about 20 of us, through just city government 101. So, we'll learn the finer intricacies of city government. It'll be a great refresher for Jason and myself, but it'll be information, I think, that'll be very valuable for the mayor and his staff and for the city council and the city clerk's office. So, thank you in advance to, I know it's a bad weather day. I hope that doesn't stop any travel from Montgomery to Gadsden, for Greg Cochrane and his team that have agreed to come to Gadsden. So, we're looking forward to that. And also want to thank the fire department. I know on the day that y'all were taking up money. I was up and down Rainbow Drive, and every time I rolled my window down to give money in the boot, I got wet, which means every time y'all stood out there, y'all were getting wet the whole time. So, thank you for how you stood out there in the inclement weather to raise thousands of dollars for less fortunate children that would not have a Christmas if not for what you guys did. So, thank y'all for doing that, Chief Reed. That's, you guys continue to perform well and serve our city well, along with our police department. We're very fortunate to have who we have working for us in the city of Gadsden. We see it day in and see it day out. Now that Mayor Ford's in office, we're seeing some pictures of some things that are happening on a pretty consistent basis. And, you know, it's just that unsung hero that I think first responders kind of, that's just, I guess, part of the business. I guess you knew that when you signed up, but, and I think everybody knows that, but that doesn't need to go unsaid, that we do appreciate what every one of you do, all the men and women of the police and the fire department and first responders. We couldn't do it without you. We couldn't have our city what we have if you folks didn't do what you did around the clock, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So, thank you very much from this council president and from this council and from a thankful city. With that being said, we will be adjourned. Thank you.